Thank you all for coming. Appreciate you getting out in weather like this. Couple of things I want you to keep in mind, so we can keep this in order. Comments, questions, you can be directed to the chairman. I don't want to get into debates among the participants. When you're speaking, I want to limit comments to five minutes to move this along. If we need a longer time and you need to come back to it, we can do that. And this meeting is going to end at 10:00 PM whether we're finished or not. Anything that isn't finished will be moved to a subsequent meeting. Okay?
Good idea.
Okay. Okay, first item is to amend the County of Barry zoning, Chapter 140 by inserting a new section, 140-11.2, adult marijuana and marijuana establishments. Now, this is the bylaw that we've written to manage the marijuana businesses, cultivation, retail, and the other parts of the other marijuana establishments in the County of Barry. And one thing you'll see in the next amendments, there are some prohibitions on marijuana retail, retail delivery, and onsite consumption. Now, these are on the warrant of town meeting. And we, as planning board, need to adopt these to, as part of the process, to keep them on the warrant. So, we can talk about those. It gets complicated. We're hoping that those can be first on the warrant when we have the town meeting. Depending upon whether they pass or don't pass, then there would be revisions we would have to make into the bylaw because we've got some of these things in the bylaw. This was the advice we were given by the town attorney of how to go about this. So, I just wanted you to understand what those three items were. That's items two, three, and four. Okay. Throw it open to any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a bunch of notations, and I was hoping I could, as quickly as possible, go through those with you and get some responses to my questions. So, we don't have, do you have page numbers on the most recent?
No.
Okay. On page three, Section C, number two D. It says, "A notice by statement signed by the organization's chief executive officer and corporate attorney." I'm a corporate attorney for a lot of companies, so I don't see any purpose in me signing something saying who the particular members are. To me, that doesn't make any sense. If you have someone from the corporation representing that, I sure wouldn't sign it. I have no business making that representation as a corporate attorney. So, I'm just curious where that came from and what the purpose of it is.
This came out of one of the bylaws that we use to craft these bylaws.
So, it wasn't something you did? My recommendation would be to strike, there's no purpose to it.
Sure, we're not going to make decisions tonight on your comments. We're going to listen to the comments. So, if you've got something that you can give us, that would be really helpful to us.
I will give you a copy of my marked up version. I can email it to Mary and...
That'd be good.
But I do want to go over them, so if you have any responses, I'm curious. But it doesn't seem, that doesn't seem to have any purpose. And frankly, the whole number D doesn't seem to have much of a purpose from my perspective. You're a planning board, I don't know what you would even do with that information once you received it. Why you need to know who the partners, the members are. I mean, it could be a big company. I don't even know what a planning board would do with that information. It seems irrelevant to me for planning purposes and doing the bylaw. I don't even think it belongs in there. It sounds great and fantastic, but it's superfluous, unnecessary, and I don't understand it. Moving down the bottom of that page to the management plan. I don't know whether, does the board know of any, or Dean maybe know of any management plan regulations? Are there any? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to move. Can you answer that?
Yes, Chairman.
Yeah, so as part of the application process, the state requires a management and operations plan. It's pretty dense. They go through pretty much most of the things that the planning board is asking for. We already have to do for the state. So, there is a management plan, which is an umbrella, and then there's specific components in that management. So, I guess, again, I don't know what the board would do with the management plan. If it's already required by the state, I don't know why we'd do any effort. It seems like a lot of extra work for an applicant, whether it's his driving or something else.
Well, if you're doing it for the state, you could use that management plan to satisfy this requirement.
Correct.
Yes, we're not asking for something different.
I'm just curious what the board's going to do with it once they get it.
Well, first we'll read it.
I understand it, but if it's already been approved by the state, which it has to be, I can't imagine that he would make it any more onerous for the state. But that's my comment, I don't want to take too much time on that. Top of the next page, well, on mine, next subsection G. I'm concerned about the language used. It says surrounding neighborhood. I don't know where neighborhood consists of. If you said the zone, like, is it commercial? Yes, G. I don't know how you define neighborhood. It's a really vague term. I think it might cause some issues, so that's my comment on that. Architectural consistency, again, I don't know how that applies to something like this town's situation where there are no other, I mean, there are no other buildings near here, so how could there be architectural consistency? I'm not sure how that could be a requirement of this type of building. So, I think that needs to be considered. Saying the, I don't know how you define, you want an impact statement from my client, and he's going to have to do this if it's passed, an impact on nearby historic structures. I don't know what nearby means. That's vague. And I don't know what historic structure is. So, again, these, and I don't know what the purpose of the question is. So, I'm a little bit concerned as to how that applies to his situation or similar situations. It doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And, so I think you should give that some thought. I don't know how you define nearby or historic structures. There's no, it just seems overreaching to me. And then you say compatibility with existing local and regional plans, but they're not identified. And I don't know what compatibility means. It really should be, is this a proper use for the zone? I don't know why we're overreaching into local and regional plans. I don't even know what that means. Further on, and I don't need to go fast, but...
That's fine, go fast.
Okay. You refer to Section 8.1, 3.10. That, to my knowledge, doesn't exist. And it's been in there for the last six amendments. I don't know how it could still be in there if it doesn't exist. I'm assuming that this board just read this and said, geez, what does that refer to? To me, it doesn't refer to anything, I'm confused.
We'll take a look at that.
And then you say designed in a manner to have a minimal impact on the community. I don't know how you define minimal impact. I think that's an unreasonable requirement, to have a minimal impact. You could, you have to use something else. Minimal impact just does not work, in my opinion. I don't know how you make a decision that it has a minimal impact or a little bit more than minimal. I don't know. It's a bad use of word. Water use study, and the third line, it says surface and subsurface drainage. I don't know what that has to do with water use. It sounds like a drainage situation to me. So, you're looking for a water use study and how they use water, how much they, what they do with it. I don't know what that has to do with drainage. It doesn't make any sense to me to have that in there.
Well, the purpose of that was rainwater, stormwater runoff from the site. Depending upon how much impervious surface you got, it means just to look at it. It may not be an issue at all, but...
Okay, I just didn't understand it being under the water use section because it's not a use of water, you're asking with the drainage.
It's stormwater runoff.
You asked for the adequacy of water supply. Well, if they're using a well, I'm not sure that they know what the water supply is under the ground. I'm not sure how you would quantify that. Doesn't seem to make sense to make them prove what the adequacy of the water supply is under the ground if they're using a well.
Well, the purpose of that was if you were using town water.
Okay, so that, we should clarify that.
If you're using well water, the answer is, we're using well water.
Okay. But that doesn't, that's not what the question says. It says details regarding the adequacy of the water supply. So, you could say this doesn't apply if it's a well. That's all. Again, uses the word minimize, it's fraught with problems. And another phrase that's used a lot is current best management practices of the industry. I don't know what those are. I don't know if they're defined anywhere. If they're not, I don't know how we show that we're doing that without having some criteria to show them.
It's a general catch-all phrase that's used in a lot of contracts. Best management practices is something you need to find out, or the owner needs to find out, and say, here are the best management practices we're using. If there are no best management practices, then there are none.
But you're requiring to prove that it's designed in accordance with that. So, I would presume that you would already know that they exist. Otherwise, why would you make my client do something?
No, we're not experts in this. We don't know that they exist. We're putting the onus on the owner to say, for this particular part of it, the best management practice that I found is this, or there is no best management practice for this part of it.
So, you would say, if any, because you're presuming it exists, and I'm not. And I don't think it does for a number of these things.
If it doesn't exist, we can't hold you to it.
Okay. Agreed. Security measure report, again, is, you know, required by the state. He can submit something. It says down...
If it's required by the state, you submit that to us.
Okay, so my concern is the last sentence that says, "The planning board, they employ a third-party consultant to review the proposed security measures to evaluate whether the security measures are appropriate." I don't know what that means. But if he's already satisfied the state and he gives you that, then I would assume that's appropriate. All I'm saying is, again, your criteria are undefined. Appropriate could mean anything. You ask 10 people whether appropriate, you get 10 different answers. So, I just think you're, what you're using for words like minimize and appropriate are inappropriate and shouldn't be used. You should have some defined criteria that they need to meet. Like best practices, even if they aren't. J. Midway through, it says, the language says, "And any further regulations established by the town." You cannot make a special permit that you've already issued, subject to future regulations. So, if you, if my client gets a special permit and you make a future regulation, he's not subject to that. It's not retroactive. So, you can't say that, you can't have that language in there. That's illegal. You cannot make my client, if you make a regulation that he doesn't comply with, you can't hold him to that after you've already issued a permit.
Well, what we're talking about here is the regulations under, the state regulations. And what this...
No, this says established by the town, which would have to be a zoning regulation of some sort, which you cannot have retroactive zoning regulations. So, I'm saying, once you issue a permit under this, you can't issue further regulations and make them, the person who already has a permit, subject to those regulations. It's illegal.
Where does it say, this is in J?
J, yeah, midway through. Right after the statutory reference. "And any further regulations established by the town."
It doesn't say established by the town. It says any other...
Mine does.
...laws or regulations promulgated regarding commercial or medical marijuana.
No, it's line of order.
Oh, okay. All right, the general law, any further regulations?
That'll have to get stricken.
Yeah, it's just, okay, I don't want to be that voice. Trust me, it's illegal, you can't do it, take it out. Check with your lawyer, I would assume he would look at this.
Shall be no less restrictive.
They can do it if your client agrees to it.
Quiet. Did he tell you to be quiet?
Yeah, that is true.
We'll take a look at that.
Check that with Jim. I can't imagine who these guys are. Subsection case, same question, further regulations, doesn't, you can't do it. And same comment, are appropriate. It's just that there's no measure for what's appropriate, Jeff. If they need a certain standard or criteria, that makes sense, but that's a terrible word to use. Let's see. Construction, subsection N, construction management plan should, in my humble opinion, be stricken in its entirety. It is beyond ridiculous that you would have the right to control my client's construction of his project. And it's almost comical. It says, "Noncompliance with the timing or sequence in the plan shall stay any further construction in the project or operation of the use until such time as the project is brought into compliance." Well, if he's missed a timeline, he can't possibly then go back in time and make that timeline so he can then proceed. That, the language in there is beyond ridiculous. And you should have no control over the construction. He's got a building from it. He builds his thing, whoever it may be, in accordance with the building permit and the plans and your special permit. You can't control that if he doesn't meet a, the concrete pour is late, that you shut him down. This is, this is beyond ridiculous. It's overreaching. It's, I can't imagine that the attorney general looked at this and said, oh, this is a good idea. This is disturbing is what it is, that you think you can control the construction progress of anybody who gets a special permit under that. I'm done telling you all that. It's unbelievable. Subsection E. I guess I'm not that concerned about it. You say that number three on the subsection E, and it would be easier if I had page numbers, but I don't, but mine are probably different than yours. It says, "No order from marijuana processing, etc., shall be detected at the exterior of the marijuana establishment," which I assume is like right next to it, "or at any adjoining use of property." I don't know what adjoining means. That's, again, a terrible phrase. But clearly, if it's not detectable at the establishment, it's not detectable anywhere further away. So, you don't need that other language because, once it's detectable at the exterior or anywhere further, then it's a problem. So, and adjoining is just, I don't know what adjoining means. Is that abutting, adjacent, within the district? I don't know. Showing that I'm not partisan to my client's situation. You say outdoor cultivation is allowed on existing farmland. I don't know how you define farmland. And why wouldn't it be allowed on industrial property if it's allowed on farmland? It's just a line bothering me. Industrial property is generally not around other, you know, areas where there are people there, especially in my client's situation. So, I don't know why you wouldn't allow that industrial if you allow it in R-80, as long as you go through the proper process yet. Again, we discussed this in one of the meetings. Why the law has to be one continuous parcel makes no sense to me. If a guy, if a farmer has three small parcels and it makes up 20 acres, what do you care? Doesn't make, it seems weird that you would leave that in there. I know it was in the solar bylaw. I don't know why it's even in here. Let's see. Marijuana, the next subsection B, under allowed uses, no below-rigged foundations. I don't know.
Well, we've kind of, we've taken a lot of stuff out, so you're not really looking at the current one?
What, did you take that out?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of stuff in it.
Great, no, it's here.
It's on a copy we were provided as copies for today.
So, why don't I just keep going, and if it's up, then we won't worry about it. Okay. Indoor cultivation marijuana, it says indoor cultivation marijuana requires approval through the special permit, SPGA. Well, just so statingly obvious, anything having to do with marijuana has to go through me. So, I don't even know why you would put that in there.
Can I ask, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I ask a question? What was, what's the logic behind allowing outdoor cultivation on farmland only and precluding it from being allowed on industrial property?
The issue with outdoor cultivation was an attempt to provide some help to farmers in Barry, to allow outdoor cultivation of it. Because some people showed up at the public meetings we do and said, they may want to be doing that. We didn't consider it on industrial property, so...
Okay, but by allowing it on industrial property, you're not precluding farmers from doing it?
No.
So, the way this is written, all you're doing is precluding someone with industrial property from doing it.
Right.
I would suggest that maybe the board can review that and strike that for industrial.
We'll take a look at that. We weren't specifically excluding it. We just, the idea was, people showed up and said, I'm a farmer and I may want to do this.
Which is a great idea.
And, yeah, and that, and, you know, and the other issue is, farmland's all R-80. So, we wanted to have a minimum size, so it really was farmland and not, you know, not somebody's farm yard.
Sure.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. Subsection F, annual reporting. I don't like it because no other special permit requires annual reporting that I know of, so I don't know what the purpose of annual reporting is. But at a minimum, you should strike where it says, "And demonstrate continued compliance with the conditions of the special permit." This special permit could have 30 conditions. One of them being, obviously, that you can't smell the marijuana anywhere outside of major buildings. How do you quantify that in an annual report? Does someone just say, yeah, we meet all of that stuff? I mean, no other special permit that this town issues, do you have to go back every year and say, I'm doing everything that I'm supposed to? If there's an issue, it's reported, the board investigates, and then if it's a problem, you know, you go from there. You don't get an annual report that says, I'm in compliance and here's why. That, it's, again, overreaching craziness at this point. So, if you want him to show you that he's got all his licenses or any other establishment, that makes sense. All my licenses are still in here. You would obviously know that, I'm sure, if, I'm sure there's some local reporting required if someone doesn't have their license. But to require continued compliance with all the conditions is overbroad.
Doesn't the state law require an annual report?
Not with the conditions of your special permit.
No, but an annual report is required.
There's an annual security report that's required. So, if you want, yeah, maybe you can say something like...
Can we request a copy, by chance? Could we request a copy of whatever you submitted to this?
Yeah, provide a copy of the annual report provided by us to the state. That would be funny. I just thought that was a little crazy.
That seems sensible. But at least does being provided a copy make sense.
Restrictions and prohibitions. Number three. All pertinent structures, including but not limited to shelters, storage facilities, transformers, and substations. Again, I'm assuming this was stolen directly from the solar bylaw. Makes no sense whatsoever and should be deleted. That's what I'm saying on that. I don't even know how you apply this to any marijuana facility unless it's stripped down or deleted. Number four, an AMU must minimize through design and operation any adverse impacts on the butters. I don't even know how you would determine that. There's no criteria that you set forth to determine whether or not he's minimized adverse impacts on the butters. That's, again, overbroad, overreaching, undue pardonsome, and wouldn't pass muster. It's, I don't know where it came from.
Well, adverse impacts to butters, we're referencing the Massachusetts general law here, Chapter 40, where that's defined.
So, how does he prove that he minimized adverse impacts? That's my question. There's no criteria under which he could say, I did this, this, and this, therefore I've minimized adverse impacts.
I don't think he has to prove it. I think it's just, you know, where people start calling them...
No, it says, no, that's one of the requirements. It says. Restrictions and prohibitions. Minimize through, I don't, again, I don't know how you do that. It doesn't say if someone calls and there's a violation. It says, I don't, it just seems excessive to me, that's all.
Where are you, Paul?
I am on number four, under restrictions and prohibitions.
Yeah, G. Under G.
G4.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome. Number six, I don't really care that much about it, but not allowed on unfragmented open land. I'm not sure what that is, maybe because the definition's on there. But towns' open space recreation plan, master plan, and community development plan. Towns' open space, I don't know what that is, but if it incorporates all the farmland, then you've just wiped out all the farmers. So, I don't know if you guys know what that is, but if you don't, you should. Otherwise, you don't know who you're preventing from being able to do something. So, I just throw that out there for your review.
The open space plan, recreation plan we have, the County of Barry does not have a master plan at this point.
Okay. Again, if they do have a master plan in this for the special permit issue, they would be in violation according to this wording, so it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. You say AMUs are not allowed on agricultural land, but prior to, you said, in R-80, they should be on existing farmland, which I assume farmland is agricultural land, so...
Well, stipulating prime agricultural land. The idea would be that you're not taking the best land that could be used for agriculture.
What's the best?
They have actual soil maps.
So, if I had a big giant farm and I had really good soil and I couldn't grow marijuana, I could only grow tomatoes?
It would be limited to the places that have less desirable soil. It's just an idea to try to maintain prime agricultural land for agriculture.
It's agriculture, it's marijuana.
It's not defined by the state as agriculture, sadly.
Okay, actually, it is. It's a plant, and it's what...
You're a lawyer, the legal definition, this is not legally defined as agriculture.
What's the difference between 10,000 pounds of tomato or 10,000 pounds of pot?
Because one edible, one is not.
No, in relation to your worrying thing about the soil.
Legally, marijuana cultivation is not agricultural. If you want to grow hemp, that's agricultural, and I'd be more than happy to grow hemp on...
But I'm saying, you're trying to preserve farmland, but aren't I basically growing a crop on good soil? Why is that bad? Exactly.
Cultivation of marijuana is not considered agricultural.
That's really the...
You can say it was agricultural, I don't care. Take that phrase out, I take it back. Take that phrase out, I take it back. All I'm saying is you're growing a crop, right? On great soil, whether it's marijuana or a tomato, it's a crop. So why would I want to grow marijuana on bad soil? Doesn't make any sense.
How do they grow marijuana in outdoor cultivation?
I'm just saying.
What's the procedure? A lot of the procedures that I've seen, they actually grow them in containers. They don't actually interact with the soil. So you'd have a giant bag that they would make a topsoil mix in.
I don't know.
You don't know, I do. So what's the point of having a bag of soil sitting on prime agricultural land? In general, the best way to go would be to have a gravel area that you could move equipment on, so then you could put your bag down. So the idea of having prime agricultural land used up in a system that's more industrial and agricultural, it seems like a waste of resources.
But at the same time, you're trying to promote potential for farmers to use this. And you are right that that is one method of growing outside in the bags on top of that. However, there are also plenty of cultivators all over that will put it right in the ground. So I guess, I guess the contradiction or the dichotomy that I wouldn't get is if you're trying to promote farmers to be able to do this on their property, why would you then take a potential portion of the best property away from them, almost hamstring, hamstringing them from doing what you want them to do? It doesn't seem to make sense.
Thank you.
Two points you think, it is not agriculture. However, I can say that most likely if you're not permanent on your prime resources, it's not going to be sellable. The marijuana that you're going to create out of subprime, if it's truly on, in the ground, is not going to be sellable because of the chemicals are basically going to get sucked up into the product and it's not going to sell.
Well, I don't believe that they actually be growing it in the soil. If it's outdoor cultivation, it's going to be in, I mean, a lot of these places where they grow, they have a very specific soil mix, fertilizer mix. So they would not take the chance on such valuable crop to chance at the having the right nutrients, right aggregates in the soil. It's, it's kind of a waste of time, even on prime agricultural land. There's just too much that they're investing. So the idea to, and in general, you're saying prime, you're making, I think you're making more of a deal out of than it is. Prime agricultural land, I mean, I'm just guessing on a number here. I mean, ninety-seven percent of statistics made up on the spot, so this is one of them. The majority of prime agricultural land is, you know, in the minor percentage. So I mean, Carter and Stevens, I don't know. I mean, most of their land probably is not prime agricultural land. So the idea that we're taking up all this space, you could grow marijuana outdoors from removing from prime agricultural land, it's just, it's not the fact.
Okay. All right.
What, just to clarify this a little bit, item, okay, we're on items six, seven, eight and nine.
Correct.
Were comments that we received from the town administrator suggesting we incorporate them.
Okay.
And we thought, that's probably a good idea.
Okay. I think.
We could go back and talk to him. And maybe understand the reasons behind these a little better. But that's where those comments came from.
And I would think eight would be better left to the CONCON. Those all seem like CONCONs, they're biomass, development, heritage endangered species, I don't know. I mean, I would assume that they would have to pass muster through the CONCON too.
We're here. We're here.
We're everywhere. All these people are everywhere. Just to, just to make a proof of guard to that, because, because we don't apply for a state license, the state requires us to apply with natural heritage in, division of this environment. So we have to do that anyway because we're getting a state license.
Number ten says all marijuana cultivation located in a fully enclosed permanent building, except for outdoor. I might want to put that exception in there because obviously outdoor wouldn't be in a building.
Well, it's all, it says all indoor.
Not mine, but okay, so you obviously.
I think we corrected that on this one.
Okay, so I was just going after this, I haven't seen it. Number eleven's overreaching, but. I think we'll pass over that. Fourteen, let's see. Additional, second sentence. Additional security measures may be added by the planning board, CONCON, building department, board of health and other applicable departments. At their, I'm sure that means discretion maybe fixed.
Oh, yeah.
At the time of this application or in the future if issues arise. First of all, security requirements are very stringent to the state, I'm sure you realize. As, and, I can't imagine what the board of health would put on for security. Maybe you mean pesticides, I don't even know. But the worst thing in that, it's pretty bad, that, that sentence shouldn't even be in there. But the worst thing is, or in the future if issues arise. Again, you cannot make him or anyone else responsible for anything that you do in the future after you issue a permit. So that, that is, I don't know where that came from, I don't know who added it, but it shouldn't be in there. And the, the CONCON at their discretion can make up a security measure? That's just, again, overreaching. He's already filed a security report that's been approved by the state. What these other boards would want to do for security is beyond me. I don't know where that language came from, it's outlandish. Sixteen. For insect work, the use requires a special permit, which is everyone. You can't do anything without a special permit. No building permits, site clearing, affilling materials, et cetera, et cetera, can be done. You cannot prevent anyone from doing things on their property with this language. Anybody can go out with a bulldozer and dig around on their property so long as they're not causing a problem. You, that's, that's an illegal restriction on someone's property. That, that shouldn't be in there. I would assume Jim would look at that and say, take that out. It's, you can't say that you can't clear or fill or grade your property. They could be doing something else, they can do anything they want. So once they get the building permit, they, they do it in accordance with the building permits. I, that's, I don't know why that's in there. Findings. Leads on the permitting requirements of all applicable agencies within Conwell as proposed upon the applicable state regulations. I'm concerned again about the overreaching. You're a planning board, you're planning for how this thing sets up in town and how it relates to our regulations here. He obviously can't operate with all state requirements. It's the same thing with, you're saying that you won't issue the permit until he proves that he has site assignment. Well, what if he doesn't, if the site assignment regulation says they won't issue site assignment until you have a special permit? So you're not going to issue something until the other guy does and the other guy's not going to issue until you do it. You can't withhold a permit based on him having to go somewhere else and get something else. If he meets the requirements of the bylaw, excluding what you've put in here for meeting other people's requirements, like the board of health, the CONCON, you cannot withhold it if he's already, if he, if he meets the requirements. Again, you'd have competing boards saying, I'm not going to issue unless they do. Well, I'm not going to issue unless they do, and then nothing happens. There's no purpose to that. If he meets the requirements, he, or anyone, they get their permit. Number three says, provide copies of licenses, great. Host agreement, great. And subsequent regulations to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Again, that's all building inspectors stop. If he doesn't do what he's supposed to, the building inspector won't let him build. That doesn't have anything to do with your special permit. People go get a special permit, then they go to the building inspector and get a building permit. And they say, I have a special permit. You shouldn't be dictating what the building inspector does for a job. And. Number four, design to minimize any adverse visual economic impact. Again, how, how does anyone prove that they minimize economic impacts? I don't even know what that means on a butters. It's overreaching, overbroad, undue burdened some and crazy. Number five says provide a secure waiting area. I'm just curious what that means and, and what concept of providing a secure waiting area.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
That, that came out of one of the, one of the bylaws we used to.
Just seems odd. Provide adequate security measures. And number six, I don't even know what it means. To ensure that no individual participant, I don't know what that means, will pose a direct threat to the health, safety or other individuals. That, so I can understand that the storage and location of cultivation is adequately secured, that makes sense. But I don't know what that first part means, that participants don't pose a, I don't know why, how you approve that in, in your security measures. That, that's, I don't know, it seems unimprovable. Prior to execution delivery, this is what I was talking about before, the special permit. Written confirmation that the, the CONCON has done what they're supposed to. But what if he goes to the CONCON after you guys? And the CONCON says, I'm not going to issue something if you don't have a special permit. So I think that, I don't think that you should withhold your special permit based on something that someone else has to do. They have their own job to do. And they do it, great. Doesn't have anything to do with what you're doing here as a planning board. Let's see, take it out, handle it. The sixty-one A thing, again, if I'm, I wouldn't take my property out of sixty-one A because of the complications that it requires monetarily and otherwise, until I have a special permit. And you're saying, I'm not going to give you a special permit until you do this. Well, what if I do it and then you don't issue the special permit? Then I have to go undo my sixty-one A thing. Just issue the permit and say, that's one of the requirements. If you don't do it, we'll terminate your special permit. You already have a provision for that in here, that if I don't comply with the special permit, you can terminate it. So again, you, I, I don't think you should make other things, your permits subject to other things happening. Let that happen in its course. If it doesn't, then you can withhold the permit. Written approval by the Barry Board of Health for the use of all chemicals listed on the document. I don't know what document we're referring to, so is that the submission or maybe the application?
Yeah.
Okay.
In some place we asked for what.
Okay. Again, the word decommissioning scares me. I don't think that was well defined in here as far as. Again, the whole decommissioning thing really had to do with solar. So I, this, this document is, concerns me with decommissioning and requiring removal of buildings, et cetera. If you simply say in a cultivation situation, you have to comply with the state's requirements for removal and disposal of marijuana, then that's fine. But you're requiring, and I'm getting ahead of myself, you require removal of buildings.
No, we don't.
No, we took that.
We took it out.
That's gone, yeah.
Thank you. In the, where it says host agreement in subsection F, it says that you need to provide a copy of the host agreement, which is fine, which also describes the measures the applicant intends to take to mitigate potential negative impacts. Is that still in there?
Where are you?
I'm right here at the bottom.
Section F?
Right at the bottom.
Is what I'm reading still in there? Okay. Negative impacts on the town in a budding neighborhood from the registered medical recreation hybrid cultivation site. That's not in a host agreement. So you're asking them to give you some, give you the host agreement, which includes something that's not required for a host agreement. That, that shouldn't be in there. You already have all of that language six times in the bylaw anyway, that, that doesn't belong in there. That's not in the host agreements for. Provide a water use study for the town of Barry. Does that mean, does that mean, in that subsection H, I'm sorry. Does that mean go to the water department and ask them for water use study? Or what exactly do you think?
This was if you were using town water.
Okay.
To determine if there was sufficient capacity. But what I think I heard is you're going to be using the well.
No, but I mean, just in general, anybody. So maybe we just need to clean that up and say, in the, in the event the, any user will use town water, you need to provide something from the.
The water department.
Says that there's sufficient water, something like that. Just, it's a little bit vague, that's all. Hopefully in our case it doesn't matter. It just, one of the meetings my father, the water commissioner brought up that water issues in the water department. It's the water commissioner.
Well, we're putting things in the bylaw that we want to see done.
Of course, the planning department won't have anything to do with the execution of that study. We'll simply deal with the results, how they're given from the water.
I think what he's saying is if the water department says there wasn't enough money, they wouldn't have given them any water. So whether he had a special permit and permit or not. So even with your special permit, he's going to go to the water department and say, hey, hook me up to the water. And the water department would say, nope, sorry, not enough water. So having nothing to do with your special permit. So I think what he's saying isn't legitimate, that why is it in here? He has to go somewhere else and get that. I says, it's a little bit the same as before. Again, it's the state, I assume you're looking for the same information from the state. But I don't know if all that private information should be part of the planning board's special permit process.
It's just a question on that, so is the planning board, planning board actually running specific query checks?
No.
To determine if they come back to violations?
We're just asking for documentation that a query check's been done, that's all.
Okay. CCC, well, thank you.
But I don't think that we can provide that. That's got all sorts of personal information and I don't think that should be, anybody can come in and look at this document. It has, I, I think you should leave, again, someone else does that. I think that's dangerous stuff to have in your, anybody can come in and take a look at the special permit. They're going to look at this guy's social security number, whatever else is in a query check. You don't, you don't need that. Again, he can't get his license if he doesn't have that. So I don't think it belongs in the, in this.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk with Jim there about that one. We're not asking for the query check, so maybe change the line.
Yeah.
We're only asking that it gets performed, not asking to keep the information.
We don't necessarily have to have copies on hand immediately.
I don't know how well.
I don't think they give it.
Query checks been completed in favorable outcome, how do we show that to you? Again, just let the, what do you care? You're a planning board, you're not checking query people. The state does that, you guys have enough to do. I know we want to be thorough, but again, overreaching, just let them figure it out.
But, but one thing I had on that is the last sentence actually, query check comes back to violation, the permit will be granted. Many times, the permit's been granted before the query checking the people on site and actually operating it. So you won't go through a query check except for maybe some of the high administrative level people during the permit process. And then they're going to go hire people once a building's built and they're going to actually start. And that's where the query, which then works more with the state regulatory agency to verify it occurs.
Makes sense.
The most you can probably do is, you can request the state to give you something and they may or may not, that you can give to the planning board saying, we did our checks, our query checks per state regs. The state won't say anything more than that, but they might say something like, they're in compliance with our query policy. You know, because the state doesn't want to open themselves up either, I'm just.
I think that's all we're looking for.
Yeah, we're just looking.
It's still a guess, I don't know if they'll do it. I'm just saying that might be something they would do.
But.
Please, the department does the query check.
The state, the candidate's appropriation does the query check.
Right.
I can tell you that having run summer camps in the town of Barry, I was required to turn in a signed paper by me saying that I completed query checks for all of my employees, signed off with their name that yes, I had completed it. It was just a simple form that was included in the application.
No, personally, they would just say.
Just an affidavit that yes, I had done a query check, I had done a story check, there was, that anything that was reported within that had been signed off that yes, we were aware, we were taking it under our own liability. Because one of the things that they'll say is, if you have somebody who's a, working within the marijuana industry who had prior convictions that involve marijuana, that doesn't preclude them from being involved because a lot of those are being stripped. So that's something where they're taking on the liability of, yes, we did do a query check, we're aware of what their query check says and we're still going to, and we've employed them. So you guys can say, it's not our liability if you hire somebody. So I mean, that's what we had to do for our permit within the town as an employer.
Okay. It's a little bit different with the state. To register a dispensary agent, which is basically an employee, the state run a query check, they have the forms that the potential employee has to fill out and send it to the state.
So you just provide the information, the state, they do it.
Information in the field.
Okay.
Employment is an ongoing issue, so it's one thing if you start up a business and you have your employees and you get a query check, but then is you have turnover. So then would, would have to continually update their.
They have to be registered dispensary agents, registered with the state of Massachusetts to even walk inside on the property.
Yep.
In order to become a registered dispensary agent.
Need a query check.
Right, but I mean, as far as the town goes for this permitting process, to have a query check done, so. check done, so it almost seems like it would be an ongoing paperwork, you know, for the town to keep up with every time you have a turnover in employees, so.
The next section, transfer discontinuance, one and two contradict each other. One says that it's non-transferable without an amendment to the special permit, which means a new person has to commit it before your board. But number two says the special permit is non-transferable. So, two conflicts with number one, and you really don't need two because it's incorporated on the number one, frankly, so is number three. So, something needs to happen there, so we're not, there's no confusion. So, it is transferable, subject to approval of the board.
Of an amendment, yeah.
Right. So, that's not what number two says, I just wanted to clear that up. Let's see. The, under L, you're, you say we can have, you can have consulting review fees, but you should have a schedule. You can't have no criteria and just pick a number. That, that wouldn't be allowed. So, I think you should talk to Jim about putting in some criteria as far as how you, how you determine what the amount is going to be, because you have to have a rational basis to request the amount. So, you might want to have some sort of fee schedule there. And the next page on subsection A, what the, what's the information and assessment for the following topics? It says, "Provide analysis of whether the application and these specific citing requirements." I assume that means bylaw, just in general? Again, it's, I, you're, and you're mixing and matching criteria because you say, "Are designed to have a minimal detrimental impact on the community." That's completely different from the wording that was already used in the bylaw. And I don't know what minimal detrimental impact on the community is, and I don't know how an outside consultant would even know what that is. So, my, my thought on that is, you hire the consultant to ensure compliance with the terms of the bylaw. Don't, don't reiterate what you already put in the bylaw and then change the wording around. Just simply say, you know, if you, if the water use study, the management practice, all that stuff, if you just simply say, "He's going to evaluate anything we want him to do under this bylaw," because you're, you're handcuffing yourself and using different words in here, which doesn't make any sense. So, that would be my recommendation in that section, so as to not confuse things and use different words like minimal detrimental impact, which you hadn't used before. The insurance requirement. And again, I think some of this comes from, and this is under visual impact, I'm not sure why, because it's insurance, I don't know if that's in visual impact, but on the subsection O, the applicant shall submit documentation determining general liability insurance. I don't, I don't know, is that, what's the purpose of that? I assume that came with solar bylaw.
No, that came from the, what they end over bylaw.
Okay, so what's the purpose of, do you require that with a liquor license? If they have insurance? I mean, why is this any different? Why are you making this more difficult for this particular product than something else? They, they don't want insurance. If someone slips and falls, it's on them. How does it come back to the town? Once again, CCC requires it. They require the insurance. CCC requires the insurance?
Yeah.
So, maybe in compliance with CCC?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Well, this is a recreational bylaw, correct? Or is this the overall marijuana, everything, overall?
Overall.
I just wanted to make sure I just said that.
It's like a bagel, everything bagel. Are you, next, go ahead, sorry.
Do you know what the amounts are for the CCC?
You know, I don't have the rights with me, but this looks pretty...
Okay.
And I, I...
So, we could say...
As...
You also get documentation that they have liability insurance in accordance with the CCC.
That makes sense.
When are you required to get that for the CCC? Before they issue the file certificate of registration? But, but, again, I'm saying, if someone else requires that, and he doesn't have it, and he's not required to get it until a later date, why are you holding up your special permit? Because they're not going to give him a certificate unless he has the insurance. But you're telling him he has to get the insurance now in accordance with CCC. Just, again, it's like, what the hell?
We wouldn't hold it up for this. We would say, "You need to have this insurance."
It says he has to submit documentation.
Online of when they need to have it.
But it says he has to submit documentation. So, if he can't submit documentation saying he has it, then you withhold the permit.
Well, we'll, we can, we can fix that.
Okay.
We just want a certain amount of liability insurance.
Upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the building inspector, the applicant's required to submit to the...
Proof of insurance, yeah.
I was just going to say, a drain layer in the town of Barry has to have insurance. I mean, those requirements when they ask to do that kind of work.
No different than a constable. You have to be bonded. You can't do one bit of work without proof of bond.
Right, so we won't be able to operate unless we have it.
Yep.
So, we would be in compliance. The, the next one says utility notification. I assume that that is a solar thing that was stricken already? Subsection O. P in the new one. P in the new one. Why is that in there?
We need to look at that for a little while.
Yeah, that one's vestigial.
P in the new one.
It's...
P in the old one. Okay, moving on.
That's kind of...
We, let's see.
It's a long five minutes.
Am I going overtime?
It's about an hour.
As soon as I'm done, I probably answered all the questions. I'll be done very quickly.
I can't write that fast.
Planning board review process, that, it doesn't have a number, but, number two, public hearing. You can't, such request shall not be unreasonably denied, a request for a extension. You, you can't do that. That's illegal. You can't make someone give you an extension. Jim, please address that with Jim, because that's not legal.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
Third, third line. It says, "The time for acting may be extended upon written request of the applicant and/or planning board." So, the planning board asks the applicant to extend the time, the applicant says no. You, you say, "Such request cannot be unreasonably denied." Of course it can. Either, either one of you can say no to a request. That's part of the mass law. So, that, I just, that shouldn't be in there. Under subsection three, three A, final action may consist of either approval of a site plan based on a determination that the proposed project will constitute a suitable development. That's tarot language. You should say something like, "Complies with the terms of this bylaw," because you didn't use suitable development anywhere in the whole prior fifteen pages. So, your criteria is what you put in the bylaw, not suitable development. So, you should be careful with, with that language, because I don't think that would fly. Same with, in that same language is in subsection C.
And that's where, and...
On second line of three A.
Three A.
The planning board's final, it just, it's, it's not a, it's not a reasonable criteria, just if you simply say, "Complies with all the requirements of this bylaw," I think that would be, okay. Down in subsection R, building permit and building inspector, that, that is completely the building inspector's job. That has nothing to do with you, and should be stricken. You, I don't even know what that, "No installation shall be instructed, installed and modified without first obtaining a building permit." Obviously, that, I don't know what's that, that's doing in the bylaw. "The application for building permit must be accompanied by the fee required." Again, that's, let the building permit people do what they do. In subsection one under that, under R, says, again, you're telling the building inspector what to do. That's completely inappropriate, and especially using the phrase objectionable visual impact. That, that whole R should be deleted. You, you can't tell the building inspector what to do.
Yes, we can.
That's not, you can, but you shouldn't. The planning board shouldn't, shouldn't have anything to do with that. And then right after that, subsection two says, "The planning board shall conduct their site plan review as to visual impact." Are there criteria there as to visual impact? I don't know. I don't know what, you, you should say that it meets certain criteria under visual impact. I don't know what, what we're getting at there. "Required submission of such documentation as it deems reasonable." Again, that's so overbroad and overreaching and vague. What exactly are you looking for? You need to tell the applicant what their responsibility to do. You can't just say, "We're going to go look at the visual impact and we might ask you for things." You have to, you should say, "Meet these certain requirements." Subsection T, monitoring and maintenance. And mine goes one, three, I'm sure you fixed that. Number one is maintenance, number two is modifications. I don't know why modifications is under monitoring and maintenance. Oh, you put modifications in there. Okay, that makes sense. Decommissioning, again, this is...
That's from panels, I think.
What's that?
I think the decommissioning aspect, I think that's vestigial from the solar panel.
Yes. So, did we take that out?
No, it's, it's, it's here. So, the, the board, any, you, section U one, removal requirements. "Any facility that has reached the end of its useful life is better banned or is discontinued operations for the discontinue removal in the parcel within one hundred and fifty days after the date of discontinued operations." So, that means by discontinued operations under special permits, but then monitor tomatoes at...
There you go.
Building down?
Well, if you're growing something else, you have a discontinued operations. But the purpose of this is to make sure that we're not left with something in town where there are lots of plants, lots of chemicals, lots of other equipment, and then the town's responsible.
Well, the state requires that we set, put a bond up for the removal of all marijuana products upon, you know, cessation of operations. The state, so we have to, we have to put that in that rule, the requirement now.
So, maybe we should have it...
As compli...
It's already in number two.
Yep.
So, number one shouldn't be there. It's already, required to remove all the plants, materials, all the paraffinalia. You, I, I can't, what authority do you have to make him remove his building? If he removes the plants...
No, we're not, we're not saying we're not doing that.
Okay.
Last sentence addresses that for structural reasons. We're not saying you have to remove the building.
It's actually under line...
Where does it say that?
It's on our, it might be on our document.
Okay.
It says, "Structures that may have a potential for future use are not required to be dismantled or demolished and removed."
So, in the sentence before that, though, you're asking the owner or operator to notify the planning board by certified mail annually as to the proposed date of discontinued operations and plans for removal. What if I don't have any proposed date for discontinued operations?
Annually should come out, that's not, you should just say, notify, if, if you have plans for discontinued operations. King, where did you see annual?
So, U one.
It says, "As an ongoing obligation, the owner or operator should notify the planning board by certified mail annually." That, that should come out.
Yeah, the annual should be coming.
That's how I got it.
I don't claim to do that. I'm just, they're here, you get the new postcard. I'm just...
It could be a formular.
Okay.
Yep, still here, yep, still operating.
What kind of annual is it going to be?
Again, it says, "The site to be restored is nearest reasonable possible to the condition prior to commencement of construction." Again, that presumes removal of the, of the building, because that's how the property was prior to construction. Is that still in there?
Yes, it's in there.
A lot of us, too, are trying to differentiate between commercial cultivation and then outdoor grow on R eighty. So, the idea was that we didn't want a facility in the R eighty to be abandoned and then have the farmer be left with something that he, or landowner be left with something that they, they don't desire. So, in that case, then, everything could be removed, fences, green...
Right, but you should limit it to that, because that is...
Right, well, that's what we're...
Clear in there.
Yeah, I think we're, through discussion, we've been defining that, so we need to work that a little more.
Okay.
But that was the intent of our...
Okay.
Obviously, if you put up a building, we don't want you to remove the building. We just want you to remove only the equipment that would be a specific form marijuana.
And I know we discussed that, I just don't, it's, it's uncalled...
Right, it's going to make it in here, absolutely.
Again, abandonment, I don't, is that a solar thing? If he starts operating for more than six months, then you can make him close up shop? I mean, I don't, I'm not sure. That's four abandonment.
Yep.
I think that need, might need some work. I, I don't understand that. Again, obviously, it's from the solar, but it doesn't, it doesn't apply across the board to this type of facility. And I assume that the, I don't know if you still have the dot there, remove all materials, and it says removal of any structure building. Did you take that out?
It's still here, but that should go.
In the bullet item?
Yep.
Well, I mean, that would be as far as the outdoor grow R eighty, that anything...
It's not what it says. That's all I'm saying, is it's not what it says.
Right, right, no, it doesn't need to be cleaned up, but I mean, there is relevance, it just needs to be worked in.
Okay.
I've got a question. What is the relevance if, say even it's an R eighty?
Yep.
The owner built the facility.
Right.
So, why is there any relevance for the planning board to tell him to get rid of it?
It would only be if the owner no longer wants the facility. I mean, same thing...
Well, that's his choice to do it when he wants to. I mean, that's where I'm confused, where the planning board should come in and say, "Well, remove the building."
This is America.
It's the owner's choice to remove the building or not, and if they don't want it anymore, then, and if they're doing like a lease where someone else is using their property...
Yep.
They should be, put it in their lease agreement, not in a planning board bylaw.
Okay, I mean, that was more the thought, that if it was leased, because that's what most of these would more likely be, a lease situation. So, we don't want somebody to be stuck with a bunch of equipment that they don't like, but I guess that could be moved to a, a private lease. But the idea was also that, you know, they wouldn't be forced to remove something that they don't want to have removed. I mean, as of any business, where, you know, you dairy farm, you own a business, you shouldn't have to remove the dairy barn.
Exactly.
That's all, right. That's more of what I was thinking, maybe the company guideline would be something we could create that would help people, because some of this seems to be almost referencing guidelines, like the, go see the board of health, go see the const... These things are things they have to do anyway. So, it might just be a cover sheet of, "When you want to do this, here are things to do," and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the bylaw. Just a suggestion.
The next full paragraph, I'm not sure, "In the event the owner or operator has not completed the removal at the conclusion of ninety days from the date of written notice." Written notice from whom, about what? That, that needs to be worked. I don't, and I, I just don't see that the town entering onto anybody's property be decommissioned. That would be a bad idea anyway.
I think the CCC has control of that.
Over financial surety.
If I were the town, I wouldn't be stepping on somebody else's...
No, they have jurisdiction.
That's a bad idea legally. I, I wouldn't put that in there. Number two, financial surety. Number two, financial surety. It says, "As part of the application, the applicant shall provide planning board with fully inclusive estimate of costs associated with decommissioning and removal of facility and site restoration." Again, we've, we've been talking about that. That, that doesn't apply here, and it may apply to R eighty, but it doesn't apply in this situation, so I don't, it doesn't make any sense.
Also, with regard to requirements of twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent. Once again, it's, before the state licensed me, they require that I put into escrow the amount that they approved to remove all marijuana and marijuana-related products upon cessation-
How do they come up with that figure?
It's a subjective figure. It's, so if you have ten thousand square feet, you're gonna do one thing, five thousand square, they don't have a guideline on it. I might be able to do it more efficiently, but what they do have to do is approve the amount I put to escrow. So, that's gonna sit there. So, this, this is like-
So, maybe we could just say in accordance with CCC regulations, not in I-
I just made that exact note.
That, that makes sense.
And that's all I have, and I really appreciate everybody's putting up the lead for the last forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes? You mean an hour and fifteen minutes.
We watch it slow.
Well, who's counting?
Now, it's five minutes, because it's-
Who's counting?
Can I ask a question that I don't know if you have an answer to, or if I have an answer to, but who is actually gonna be at town meeting to be the moderator for these questions? Because I'm assuming that-
There was some discussion. I believe we're looking for alternates that will come in. I've heard three names brought up that might be viable options. We're still trying to figure out who wants to.
I mean, nothing against you, but I'm just-
Oh, no, I won't be there.
Wouldn't the town-
But that is something I understand that we're looking for.
Wouldn't the town clerk, if so, fact, I'll be, in your absence?
They have the right.
She could, but that would be confusing because she'll be doing that stuff while she can't moderate at the same time.
Makes sense.
Earlier in, about forty-five minutes ago, we were talking about using the statement minimize. Do you have a suggestion on what other word should be used instead of minimize? Minimize, minimize a whole bunch of stuff.
And now you're on the clock, right?
What section are you in?
Good, do a question.
I just saw it on the top of the page.
What's the page number?
Four.
I don't know, I just saw it. There's, there's like a bunch of pages with it on it. I just saw it on top of one page. I'm just curious what other words would be suitable.
Sure, I'll, I'll think about that and send it along.
Okay. You'll give us a copy of-
Of your markups.
Okay? If you give that to me.
I'll leave the last. He'll take the exclusives out. No, I-
I just picture a document riddled with red pen everywhere.
Leave them in. Okay, any, any other comments on this, questions? Me here?
I just wanna say that for as many pages as this all is, and as many places as I know you pulled it all from, I'm incredibly impressed with all of the effort that you all put into it, and I wanted to make sure that you all are appreciated for the effort that is in. This is a lot. This is a lot of work, and you guys have put a lot into it and have pulled from a lot of places. So, as many times as you were just told that that was a stupid wording, or that was inappropriate-
I never said stupid.
I didn't hear stupid. I didn't hear stupid.
I heard a lot of adjectives closely related to-
Maybe once.
Fifty-sheep-fits. I didn't say they did the wording. I was just commenting.
But I, I really wanna make sure that you guys are thanked, because all of you have done a ton of-
I would like-
Good job.
It's a marijuana use, you know, broke all this, this new state laws. It's, it's fairly contentious, and we wanted to write something that has some protections for the town, but also allows legitimate business to come into town.
It's definitely worth noting, to echo your sentiment, that you don't see all that many people that are hardliners one way or the other. There's a heck of a lot of reasonable people on this board, and that's really refreshing to see. There's a good faith effort in trying to keep with the referendum's results, but still try to protect a town that might not be ready for too much change too, too quickly. So, that's definitely worth commending off the guys, too.
Thank you.
Let me provide this to you. This is the industrially zoned property in town.
Oh, good.
I didn't bring enough copies, but I got a bunch, because we talked about it at the last meeting.
Thank you, sir.
What is industrially zoned, and limitation to what is going to be here? Industrially zoned property.
Were you asking to get that? My arms are a little stubby. Thank you.
So, these are all lots in town, area of industrially zoned property. There might be a few house lots on Norse Lane that I didn't include in this, but there's a house lot, so this doesn't really count anyway. So, if you're gonna limit in section B of five acres, and then on the next page, five hundred feet to a residential dwelling, you've zoned out probably, you've zoned out just about every industrially zoned property in town, except for Dean owns. And if you do that in business commercial, I believe my family, family and I are the only ones that own a parcel bigger than five acres. But we've just eliminated and zoned out everything in town, the business and industrially zoned property. Except for Dean and myself.
Congratulations.
I don't know why I'm telling you that. I am. And my other example, quick, I'll, I'll be definitely done in five minutes. I'll use this as an example. I own industrial piece of property. Which would you rather live next to? Would you rather live next to a seven thousand square foot row facility that has people driving in and out of it from nine to five during the day? Or would you rather live next to a sixteen unit apartment building with screaming kids and families coming in and out of there all night long? Which would you rather live next to?
I'm family friendly myself.
That's all I-
Okay, thank you, thank you. Dean, do you have anything to add?
No.
You wanna take some applause time?
No, I have to, I need, I know sometimes it comes apart. I feel, obviously, you perceive this as being our own agenda, but I know, I know this is, this is cutting edge. And you guys are trying to get this done. From where you started to where we are now, we, I think we're getting close, and maybe we can get the, then these things can get passed, and we can start bits of business.
Skinny, but from where we started on my island, I got a stack of these, probably about that high.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill, please.
Mary Ann should be-
Yeah.
Mary Ann's did, did so much work.
Bunch of work on this. Okay, next item? To amend the code of the town of Barry zoning, chapter one forty by inserting new section one forty dash eleven point three to prohibit the establishment of marijuana retailer storefront in the town of Barry. Now, these, these next three are items that we have asked to be put on the warrant for a vote at the town meeting. Comments?
This, this is me speaking as me, not as a member of the select party, just to clarify. Particularly the dispensary ones, that storefront is one that I don't necessarily support. Prohibit, I think it is generally just another business, and it's just gonna take time for people to realize. It ends up being just another business, like another alcohol storefront. The other two, I do understand the concerns, and I just wanted to put it out there as my own, just as a member of the town. I do support the prohibition on the onsite consumption, and I'm a little middle ground on the delivery, but I can somewhat support that, as long as it's specific, I guess, to recreation. Only because I do believe that there will be seniors from medical that delivery would be important than giving medicine to council chairs. So, I think we gotta be careful how we regulate the concept of delivery, but I think this wording was specific to recreational, other than that, on the ballot. So, it's gotta be the same on this in order to actually, so, that, I just wanted to say that from me, not as a selectman or chairman.
Okay.
This is, this is, just to kind of address what the one you think is a greater, the delivery. So, you're proposing to prohibit delivery in Barry? Now, by, if, if that passes, just, I'll ask you a question. Do you think there will be no delivery in Barry?
Well, there won't be a permitted delivery service in Barry.
Exactly. So, all you've prohibited is a new business in Barry. Because what will happen, because the state, the CCC, just came out with clear municipal guidance on this last week, that if you zone that out, you can't stop someone from Worcester driving into Barry. And what you're gonna see are these white vans coming in, and the state requires two dispensary agents at all times in that van, which are two jobs. And they're gonna drive into town right by the room building, where the chief is not gonna be able to stop them, and they're gonna deliver, and they're gonna take that revenue, and they're gonna turn the van around, and they're gonna head back to Worcester and pay Worcester three percent tax on that revenue. So, by, by that passing, all that has been accomplished is you've stopped some young entrepreneur in town who will still have to be licensed by the state from creating a delivery service. You're not stopping delivery in Barry.
On that note, question, does the, does the triple C have any security outlines for whatever? That was my main point of possible contention. I just wanted to know.
Transportation is its own section.
Fantastic.
It'll be like a Brink's truck.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if this was gonna be a, you know, box truck, or U-Haul van, whatever.
I just wanted to point that out, that all that is, is just stopping someone from our town from opening a business and creating some jobs. It's not stopping delivery. You can't.
As of right now, there is no CCC regulations specific to home delivery or onsite consumption. There are non-existent permits at the moment from the CCC. So, until they regulate it, however they're going to create regulations, and whatever they've put out so far is nothing but a primary draft, just like your stack that you started out with of regulations that the town was gonna use, that's all they're at right now. They haven't, they are not ready to start regulating those two permit levels.
They'll be ready in February of twenty nineteen. All I was pointing out is that town of Barry, despite whatever regulations the CCC comes up with, will not be able to prohibit delivery in Barry. All they can do is prohibit a business in Barry from starting and delivering in Barry and every, every place else. That's the only problem.
I don't think that's us. I think that's the town that's voting on that, right?
Well, it's, it's-
It'll be put on the-
Based on our, on the public meetings we held, based on the feedback we got through that, we presented this to the, to the board of selectmen and said, this is what we think we should put on the warrant. Part of it was those two that, that there aren't any state regulations for, but the other part about a, about a retail outlet, outlet, was that there were a lot of people that were very much opposed to that. So, that's why it's here. That's why it was on the ballot.
And I definitely wanted the town to vote on, so that's why I definitely supported getting it on the ballot.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, absolutely.
My opinions are my own opinions, but I do believe it's the town's choice, so that's why I wanted to-
And all three were separated out, so that if the town supports, if the town public supports having a dispensary, a dispensary, a retail shop, they support that. And if they choose to support having a delivery site, or a delivery company in town, that's, that's the will of the people, and there's no argument against it, so.
They're either going or they're not, one or the other, but they have the choice, or we have the choice.
And the other thing is, you know, the, one of the things we were trying to do with this is, you know, we, we're, we got comments in our public meetings on both sides. Some people very, feel very strongly about certain parts of it. I don't think this is the end of this by any means. But, but we received advice, and people said, "Look, why don't you start out a little bit small, and then see how this thing develops?" You can always go back and change the bylaw.
Just like solar.
Which we're doing, which we're, we're planning on doing with solar right now. We, we adopted a fairly restrictive solar regulation. It worked, and now we're thinking of, that it may be worthwhile to loosen that up and allow it under certain instances on farms. So, you know, we're, we heard, we heard what people said at the beginning, and we took action, and now we've heard what other people have said, and we're, we're proposing to take that. So, I, I look at it as sort of similar. What I like is the fact that we sit up in that room, and nobody's ever around. It's just us. So, it's nice to see everybody getting involved.
Men's rights are on the first floor.
What'd you say, Matt? He wasn't on the pipe over there. Okay, any, any other comments?
That question, if, if this saying is accurate, that would indicate, that would change my vote, because if we're saying that we're gonna have delivery anyway, I'm thinking I'm voting for no delivery, and then if the town votes for that, and that's the way it is, and we can't reverse that, and we can't get the money from it, and what's happening is you're coming here anyway, that bothers me. Can't they put the wording so I, as a layperson, would understand what I'm actually voting for? Would that be put in there? If that is accurate, because that's troublesome.
I mean, town meeting, you'll have public comment anyway, like on every warrant, there's a chance to ask a question or clarify.
But I wouldn't even have asked that question. I mean, that's like, Dean will be there. But you know what I'm saying? I mean, if you don't know, I don't know, ask your question. I don't know.
I know exactly what you're saying.
So, I'm thinking, I don't know if there's, sometimes the description, but if you vote this way, this is what it means, and that would be really important for me.
If you remember, back on quest-
Always confuse people.
Yeah.
Because I thought that if I approved-
When this, when the state was offering those ballot questions, it did say, "If you vote yes, X will happen. If you vote no, B will happen." And I think those primers and handouts are something that we should really consider drafting up beforehand, so folks won't get tricked by awkward or wonky wording.
Because I would vote, if I vote a certain way, and all of a sudden I see these vans, I'm like, wait a minute, I voted no, right?
Exactly. You voted no to allow, or no to prohibit. I understand it can get a little wonky.
Some of the questionings on ballot, question, on some of the ballot questions before, yes meant no. People saw yes, and they said, "Okay, yes," but they really meant no. It's confusing. Sam, you have something to say? You deserve the rest of your five minutes?
Right, it's on the radar.
Okay, any other comments on this? All right.
I'm gonna need a recommendation from the board, whether it's favorable, unfavorable, that we need for the selectmen.
Okay, so, this is for item two, three, and four.
You're doing all of them?
Yeah. Can we do that, or should we do them one at a time?
We'll do them one at a time.
One at a time. All right. Item two. To amend the code of the town of Barry zoning, chapter one forty by inserting a new section one forty dash eleven point three to prohibit the establishment of a marijuana retailer storefront in the town of Barry.
Recommendation, are you in favor or unfavorable?
You wanna take a vote on it? Well, I think we need a motion, but we need a motion.
Motion to vote on that.
What, Matt?
I would recommend, yeah, you make a motion to vote on your recommendations from every board.
Have you taken a, a vote as to your position even on the first item that you discussed before I got here?
No, we have not done that.
Well, you don't have to take the vote right now. You can wait till the public hearings have all been concluded, and then, as a board, sit down and, and discuss what your recommendations are gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, it's still being worked over, so I think that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, especially this one.
Document is very much in flux.
Is that acceptable for the-
I would, I would recommend, though, if you could do it before you enter solar, so it's consistent with the topic that's been discussed. I would just ask, I'm just, just asking.
Well, it doesn't have to be. They could, they could go there.
They could do it next week.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my point.
But commit a lot of rewording to it.
Just gonna not put any of them on the warrant, if they wait another week. I'm just playing. We, you're right. We all have rights.
Boy.
We're not gonna play those games. I was just asking, the group came here to discuss it and have an understanding, so I don't understand why you couldn't respond accordingly while they're here.
They can go on the warrant next time.
Well, we, we have these on the warrant.
They're already, unless you're planning on pulling them off.
Ah, never mind. You can do as you choose.
And also, you have the right, as people have done in the past, to say, "We'll make that announcement on the night of the town meeting." Because that is also an option, you know, that's given. It's not always used, but it's used at some different times.
That you would be required to do anyway?
Right.
Right, if, on every article that they ask, what is your favorable or unfavorable?
Right.
Well, I, I think we have some more work to do on the marijuana bylaw. For these other three, I don't see any reason to wait on these.
I don't either, so, let's go through them and make our recommendation tonight.
So, just so I'm clear, so, we're voting on whether or not your personal feeling as a board member is favorable to each one of these.
Right, except for number one, they don't hold off.
Yeah, on two, three, four.
We really favorably, but the town will.
Okay. We have a motion here to approve item, well, we said we want to do it on both sides, so make it for item two.
Item two, I make the motion, approve, the town meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Who's second?
I did.
He's second.
All in favor? All right.
No, I'm not in favor.
Okay, so, okay.
So, I'll wait for the next one.
No, I have to put you down.
Okay, on, yeah, right, right.
Okay, can we have a show of hands, so she knows who is yes and who is not?
Yeah. Are you yes or no?
Here.
Okay.
Number two, to amend the code of the town of Barry zoning, chapter one forty by inserting a new section one forty dash eleven point three to prohibit the establishment of, I'm sorry, to prohibit the establishment of marijuana retailer delivery only within the town of Barry. This is number three. I said two, but it's number three.
Right. What are you looking for, a second?
Especially eleven point four and eleven-
Yeah, I want to come over and put that on the table also. I'll second. Um, I want to turn here, but we can still discuss this, right? Because she had a question about that.
Number two.
What's that?
I'm wondering if, would there be a handout so people know exactly what that entails as far as, like what Dean brought, with the fact that, I mean, how would we let the voters of Barry know that regardless if that is a no vote, marijuana is still gonna be delivered in town? Because what she said, there's gotta be some way to educate people a little more about that. Well, we, we could prepare something for the town meeting that says, "Here's the issue. If you vote yes, here's what it means. If you vote no, what it means." And then we can add that.
So we don't have to do anything, change the language of this?
No.
You can actually...
Right. Okay, so you made the motion, I seconded it.
Yeah, yeah, just make sure.
He made the motion, I seconded.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Discussion?
I think it's a pretty fair point to say that deliveries will be occurring inside Barry regardless of how the vote goes.
We could, we could let people know that. We can't, we can't prohibit, you can't, you can't prohibit somebody driving through with a delivery.
Exactly.
And delivering it.
So I think it's ineffectuality. All it ends up doing is prohibiting someone from Barry opening up any kind of livery service for this sort of thing. That does make sense. And that's, that stands to reason, and that's something that should be as part of that primer before the vote.
Nicker?
Is it possible to do a temporary moratorium if this ballot question does not pass? To give you time to create, just like you had a temporary moratorium to create bylaws and create regulations within the town?
Which is still...
If you're not gonna have regulations out of the CCC for the next two, is it possible to put in a temporary moratorium on those? Or is the warrant closed and that's...
We've already submitted, um, two temporary moratoriums for each one of those, and the public hearing's in two weeks.
So, yeah? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay.
What was it? What was the vote?
Was that? Was that three, two?
Three.
Which one?
Two. I think it was three, two.
I don't know what was the number of the vote.
Um, this one is three to two. Yeah. The first one was four, so it's one.
Okay, number four, to amend the code of the town of Barry zoning chapter 140 by inserting a new section 140-11.5 to prohibit the establishment of marijuana retailer, marijuana social consumption establishment within the town of Barry. Discussion?
Why make the motion to put it on the town ballot? I'll second.
Yeah.
Any more comments?
This is one of those situations where I, too, am very much on the fence. I can see this hemming and hawing either way and having it being equally beneficial or detrimental. So I'm not entirely on board. And I think, I think most folks that are of fairly reasonable minded ideologues on either side, understand that this one comes with the greater potentiality for danger and greater potentiality for adverse, adverse aftereffect. So I, I'm, I'm personally leaning towards no on this.
This is...
Okay, all in favor?
No, right.
Right.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, those have all passed. All right.
It's over time.
Let's take a five-minute break. Not Paul Cranston's five minutes.
On the agenda is the solar regulations. Let me give you a little background. We had a number of solar facilities that were put up in the town fairly quickly. There was a large human cry from the citizens that they didn't like some of them. They didn't like the visual impact. They didn't want them next door to one. And so we revised the solar bylaw to limit solar to industrial and business commercial land. Since that time, we've gotten lots of comments from people, farmers mainly, who said, you know, we've got sufficient land that we could put up a solar facility and you wouldn't see it from the road and it would be of real value to these farmers, you know, trying to do something with their property that can make a few dollars. So we went back and took a look at the solar bylaw. We've come up with some changes to it that we think are, that would allow this. The thing is, all agricultural land is zoned R80. There's no separate zoning for agriculture in this town's area. So if it's agricultural, it's R80. And then, of course, R80 is the largest zoning in the town, lots of residential units. We made some minimum sizes because we didn't want to see this on two and three and four acre lots. And we have some pretty strict requirements in here for visibility and that sort of thing. So with that background, open up the comments on the board. We've been through this a few times and we've made some changes based on our discussions. So any comments on what we have here?
Well, I do have, I'm trying to read through it quick, but I still do have a concern about the, limiting the number of solar facilities to 12, which, do we have a number of current commercial solar facilities in town?
I think there's seven there.
Do we have? And did we ever define whether or not that would be? So if the project was divided out into three fields, if that's considered one solar field or if it's based on the permitting? I mean, this is all before I was on the board, but when this commercial ground mount solar fields came in and they broke it into two or three separate solar facilities, were those all separate permits?
One permit.
Those are all one permit, okay.
If they're all contiguous, it could be one permit.
Okay.
If they were separated, then it should be separate permits.
Well, they're divided out as far as their application to the state because then they would get the most.
That's their problem.
Right, but I wasn't sure if, since they were dividing it out with the state, they had to follow through on the town of Barry.
They'd have to have contiguous though. They couldn't say, one here, one here, and one down the street. They'd have to have them all on contiguous property.
Right. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not eating up a bunch of permits on individual fields just because they're divided out with the state. But so we have seven, we're thinking?
I think we're seven, I believe.
Currently, yeah.
So, I don't have a horse race because mine won't afford this, but I'm really curious, why are you limiting it to any number? And just to emphasize, I just kind of joked with Peter and I just did some math, and it kind of goes to your question. My Vernon Avenue floor, technically there are two solar farms even though it's one, but there's two different assessors card. So since 2013, between Vernon 1, Vernon 2, and variable solar, in taxes, including the additional property taxes, we've paid $92,000, $92,131, so we've paid about $315,000 in property taxes over those one, two, three, four years. And I can tell you that we haven't put any kids in school and I can tell you that in four years, the police have never been to any one of the solar farms. So I understand that you're trying to zone it so that maybe it's not right there. That I get. But I'm wondering why you would limit it?
We're limited for a very specific purpose. We're starting small. We don't want to open this up for unlimited development. We want to start small and then see how this unfolds. We're not saying this can't be changed down the road. It will most certainly be changed down the road. But we want to start off with a few and see if we can do this and do it right.
But wouldn't the market dictate that?
The market will dictate whatever the market wants.
Right.
That may not be what all the citizens of Barry want.
But this would, so 12 can fill up pretty quickly, especially 250 kilowatts is tiny. I mean, you could put those up there anywhere. So 12 could potentially fill up in four months, three months. But that would then mean a potential developer would then have to wait another, to another town meeting and another process like this. And that could really stifle potential development in this, in the town. I mean, if you're going to have, if you're going to have a real comprehensive bylaw, wouldn't you as a board then be able to kind of dictate how many actually go where they go? Because they would have to comply with your bylaws instead of just complying with the number?
We could only require compliance with the conditions that we put in.
Right.
We can't say, if we make it unlimited, we can't say, well, we don't want to put these next three in. We can't do that.
Sure, but your potential bylaws will dictate where they can go and how many can go. Because there's only going to be a finite number of-
It won't dictate how many unless you put how many in.
Well, there's only a finite number of parcels that will comply with your bylaws.
But we don't know what those are. We don't know whether that's 10 or 300.
But my thought is if you could put 300 in and they would meet the requirements of the bylaw, and the bylaw is based on the outcry of the town as far as being the visual impact. So if the town of Barry could put 300 of these ground mount solar facilities in R80 and not have any unfavorable objections from the citizens of Barry, then why wouldn't we want 300 solar fields in there?
Twenty billion dollars a year.
My thought is that, you know, I understand the reasoning for the number so that we can open the gate and we can see how the development goes. And I mean, that is a legitimate concern, but I also think too that the main concern from residents of Barry is the visual impact, and I think we very well addressed the visual impact. So, and going by the numbers, five, I mean, I can already think of five people that have talked with me about putting a facility in if this goes through. So then, and I mean, these are all out in the middle of nowhere locations that are certainly not going to be objectionable. So once you put those in and everything goes fine, are we going to wait for another town meeting and then put an amendment to the, you know, the solar bylaw to allow for five more permits and then we'll go from there and do that on an annual review basis? I'm just kind of curious as to how do we progress once we realize that everything is proceeding as we planned?
I can't tell you how it will proceed. You're asking me to predict the future.
Well, so they fill up.
It'll unfold the way it unfolds. But, you know, if you want to see 300 solar facilities in Barry, I can tell you there are a lot of people in Barry that don't want to see that.
Well, I mean, 300, I'm not being serious about 300. What I'm saying, that if you can fit a certain amount of facilities in Barry without any objections, because, you know, they fulfill the guidelines of our bylaw and the bylaw addresses the objections, then, I mean, really, there's the benefit. I mean, I think we need to be accountable for what we use. We all use electricity. And is that right for us to, you know, bring in electricity and then say, not in my backyard? And I think that solar does give that option for us to be able to say that we are going to be accountable in the actions we take. So I mean, I think that we need to start addressing the greater issues and I think that if we can address the town issues with the greater issues, then it's a net win for everybody.
Well, I think we are addressing the greater issues. We address those when we restrict it solar to commercial and industrial.
And if it's taken all these years and we've just got seven, wouldn't it be reasonable to assume that 12 is going to take us for a few years to deal with the 12 and then we could create a?
No, no, it's 12 total, sorry, just so you know. It's not, it's 12 total, it's not 12 more.
Okay. All right, that's a good point.
Sam?
You know, as time progresses and those people are more stoop than I in the solar biz, as time progresses, the rules and regulations, state rules and regulations and the federal benefits are drastically changing. In the beginning, there were certain benefits, now there are less, and there's a new program coming out, has come out, it's called the SMART program, which I've been told from people who are in the solar business, it's not very smart. And it restricts the income of the individual lessor and it restricts the income of the lessie. And now with the fact that there's tariffs on some of the farm solar equipment, it makes, it would make the desire of developers less desirable to bring it in. So if we have in the back of our minds as a town that we want to bring in solar, we need to think about it being a little less restrictive because the market itself is going to restrict the town because the town is going to be relying on personal property taxes and other taxes that are generated by these companies. And maybe, like something new, a child likes to play with a new toy and after a while they get tired, maybe these developers are going to get tired in here and a lot of these regulations that we're initiating are not, are not be logical for growth, that's all.
To respond on that point, I don't, I understand the phenomenon you're talking about, like a new toy and then you might tire of it and then discard use of it. I think solar and renewables in general don't follow that paradigm. In the sense, I have family that lives in Germany. Germany operates 85% of every kilowatt it needs from solar and other renewables alone. It's the sort of situation where unlike your distaste of a new, or anyone's distaste of a new technology, you can either ride the wave or you can get crushed underneath it. Technology will develop whether we like it or not. So it's the sort of thing, I think we need to get ahead of this and put some, put some pretty common sense restrictions on where these things should be placed, keeping them out of eyesore and keep them out of eyesight. But I think outwardly just suppressing a new industry doesn't make that much sense. And if we're going to be generating new income, I think this is a really good avenue to do it. And also, it's important to know that sites that are developed, that are currently farm sites, that are used for solar applications, it doesn't mean it's a permanent thing. So let's say if a gentleman that owns a large section of farmland puts up a pretty substantial commercial solar array, they operate that for a certain period of time, then let's say that person sells that land to whomever, another farmer perhaps. That farmer then can take down that solar array and that soil underneath it hasn't been touched. It does not get damaged in any way for being used for solar purposes, even for only a short period of time. And for folks that are living here in town that are getting a little bit older or don't have the profitability in farming that they might have had a decade or two or three ago, this is a very easy way for a person to generate income out of their land. When they used to be a farmer, maybe they can't do it anymore. Now they can continue to generate income from their land passively. And that's something that I don't think we should just completely rip away or take away that option.
No, I wasn't disputing it, I'm just saying that because of the new rules and regulations, it's become less and less and less desirable economically.
That's true.
And then, so if we put a lot of restrictions on it and it's becoming less desirable, the town as itself is not going to benefit as much because the number one, we're restricted and the number two, the state and federal government has done some restriction, so it's less desirable, that's all.
Well, most of the restrictions come from the federal government and those tariffs that were recently implemented were done at a whim. And that would probably, I would even say would probably only last a matter of three or four years. Those tariffs on foreign-made solar panels are not going to last. I'd be willing to bet my horse on it if I had one. So I wouldn't be able to say that-
Bet horses if they have one.
Yeah. Either way, what I'm saying is that I don't think we should plan and craft a pretty longstanding restrictive solar bylaw for something that might be just a tick in the political weather vein. It might just come and go in a matter of a couple of years.
But also, the financial viability of solar is not a concern of the planning board. So if it's not a viable business, I mean, that's here nor there for us. But I mean, also on that topic, a lot of the initial programs were, to incentivize solar, were to offset the additional cost of solar panels. So through advancements, they've been able to bring the cost of solar panels down and that's why they're removing a lot of those incentives because they're no longer needed. They serve their purpose of putting solar in mass production, which then, you know, allows profitability through mass production. But, yeah, but anyways, that has nothing really to do with the planning board, our concern isn't making solar profitable on your end.
One of the biggest obstacles that I've seen, the biggest pushback, the sources of pushback towards these solar implementations are the visual, the eyesore aspect of it. And that's something that is absolutely within the purview of the planning board, to come up with screening, privacy hedges, anything we can do to obstruct the obtrusiveness of that structure to people that live around. That's something that is definitely within our purview. The profitability aspect really is none of our business, literally or figuratively. So as long as we can craft some bylaws that protect abutters and those that live by these things, and that they're not an eyesore for folks that live around, I think we'll be able to get some good tax revenue there that will help offset people's homeownership costs.
Has the planning board as a whole familiarized themselves with the SMART program in the, you know, solar industry?
Not as yet, no.
I just think it would be beneficial for a lot of these rules and regs that come up. I think they should, honestly. Because there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of things that won't have to be addressed just because, you know, with businesses as well as it goes, you know? The windows open and they close quick, you know?
Right, but these regulations are pretty simple and they generally aim to address the visual impact.
Yeah, they're not overly elaborate. They're mostly in the land use and that sort of designation, and that's something that I'm trained in, as are many of us here.
Yeah, so regardless of what the solar programs come along, they really wouldn't affect our bylaw.
But the restrictions, what I'm saying is the restrictions come right along with it, so it's just natural, you know what I mean? It's not, you're not going to have solar everywhere in Barry, it's not going to happen.
Oh yeah, no, it's not possible because they don't have the three phase a lot of times die in, so.
I thought I just heard somebody may have mentioned that this SMART program wasn't so smart.
I can't tell you about that.
I'm kind of curious as to, it seems like you're getting input that says some people in the room are opposed to you amending the solar bylaw because I think they're thinking of the restriction aspect of it. In reality, what you're doing is you're going, over the years, what we went from is no restrictions, some guidance or some attempt to have regulations, to restrictions because of the rather large volume of applications that came in. And now because of input that you've received, you're considering reducing the restrictions and allowing some more facilities to occur. And I think you're doing it in a very prudent and careful and cautious way as opposed to just opening the floodgates and saying, let them all in and let's see what happens because once you let them all in, you can't get them out. And I think the objection to the visual, though you've attempted very well to try to control the visual, I haven't seen a solar field yet that was good looking.
That's a subjective judgment, though. It's a very subjective judgment.
Have you seen deans on the top of the hill?
I can't see deans.
Exactly.
There's a picture, right?
That's our goal.
Well, I haven't been down to see deans up front in personal, let's say that.
Right, but that's the point that we're trying to-
I just have two concerns because I'm all about being green. I know when I'm driving around now, you can't, I really can't drive more than four or five miles without seeing the solar panels. I have two concerns. One, it really bothers me when they're trying to be green and they're wiping out a field of trees to put these up. I can't reconcile myself with that. I don't understand, we're supposed to be green. And I think Barry does have a green tree community or something like that, so I'm hoping that you're looking at that as fields that are not areas of trees. I do like, I think I go on the Pike and I, somewhere I saw them in the middle of the circles down about, I absolutely love it. Think they should put them all in place, but when you're kicking out a bunch of trees, that bothers me. The other thing that I don't know, I don't know much about it, someone told me, again, someone who's more included, these fields are good for about 20 years. And then you had mentioned when someone is, that farmer's done with it, whatever, and wants to take, the next one wants to take it out. Is there something, something that says, okay, we lease it for 20 years, they're home controlling it, but I don't know how long these go, that apparently 20 or maybe? Who takes them out? Like, are they just going to be like shopping malls?
No, they're recycled. So the folks that implement and install these-
They have to take them out?
They have to take them out because they do contain materials that can be considered toxic or pollutants or anything like that. Those are sent to a specific rehabilitation and recycling factory. And that they can take back and refurbish what they can, they dispose of all the other materials on their own, and then new, more up-to-date panels are installed that are more efficient.
The company who's leasing it, that's even-
Yes. That's all on them, we don't really have anything to do with it.
Those panels, even long before the 20-year time is up, because of technology being so fast, they may be replaced in five years.
True.
With something that does twice as much in less space.
Yeah, that is true.
It might be good, just take the seawall and this and then it's just a light. And knocking down the trees really does.
One thing too, these things, we're giving a permit that lasts for 20 years. That doesn't mean that solar field is going to be dismantled and returned to agriculture in 20 years. At the end of that permit, someone can come back and say, I want to renew this permit, I want another permit for another 20 years, I'm putting in more efficient panels for second half of the 10 years. So, you know, those are things that are just unknowable right now.
Well, my thing is if they're done with it and they lease it and they just leave, and now it's nothing but a perched.
That's why they put in these decommissioning fees to pay for them.
It's built into the city. It's also important to know, as just a general point of interest, that the current iteration of what we would consider a photovoltaic unit is going to change. It already has. I mentioned that I have some family in Germany, they have translucent solar panels. So if you think of every pane of glass in your house, that pan and will, will, not science fiction, will be a solar generating piece of item. So it's the sort of thing, the way that we're looking at them now, these big, flat graphite panes, they're not going to be that way forever, especially give it seven, eight years. They're already existing now, but they're not financially feasible yet. But like the CD player, they will be. So it's really important that we get ahead of this and get in front of it and set ourselves up for success when things become more commercially available.
Nate, can, I'm going to a different angle, but just a question?
Sure.
So E6 visual impacts, on solar energy facilities, they must be located within one mile of the town commons and town Barry, South Barry or Barry Plains. Anybody can take a map and these, these big circles? I'm just curious. That must take out a big portion of the commercial industrial land.
Well, the idea was visual impact in the center of town.
But this is a mile from it.
That map over there, it's four inches out, it's four inches circle. Four inches from the center, four inches.
And how many solar panel arrays are in that circle now?
At least one.
I think there's like six.
Seems like a big number. Certainly, by the way, well, I understand that we don't want solar panels here in the common, but a mile from this is, that's a big circle.
It is.
And then from South Barry, and then very good.
That's down to like Weir Home Center.
Yeah, thereabouts, yeah.
And then that circle all the way around. And then you look from the right-hand side of the map, majority of that is NBC land.
I do think that one mile, I think that one mile restriction is excessive, but that's just, just one person on sport.
As long as it meets-
Well, that's something we can take a look at.
If it meets the, you know, restrictions of not being able to be seen by people-
What we can do-
Even if it's within that mile, why does it have to be one?
What we can do here, we can talk to the mass GIS, we can get all of our necessary GIS data and see what sort of radius would exclude what versus a smaller radius excluding anything else. We can go in with more of a scalpel approach rather than a sledgehammer.
Yeah, the purpose behind this was, the idea was to free up the permitting so that we can have these solar facilities on existing farms, gravel pits, other places around town where it makes sense to do that. That was the purpose. And to answer your question that you raised about cutting down trees and farmland, in the state regulation, the enabling regulation to put in solar facilities, they talked about, they didn't want to see trees cut down and they didn't want these things growing on prime farmland. Well, in Barry, that's about all we've got. You know, it's, we don't have, you know, the state talked about brownfield sites and impaired industrial facilities, we don't really have that. So, you know, if it's going, it's going to, you're either going to cut trees down or it's going in a farmer's field, pretty much.
Field doesn't bother me so much.
Well, we've got a landfill, we've got an old town dump.
The next one down, number seven, I'm just curious, I don't quite understand what that means. It seems like there's a word missing that it's, the sentence is referencing, but missing. So, unfragmented open land is identified as a priority for protection in the town's open space and recreational plan, master plan, or the community development plan.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
So, unfragmented open land as identified as a priority for protection in the town's open space and recreation plan, master plan, or the community development plan, period, shall be, I mean, it seems like that should be.
Chairman, if I could address that, because that's a point that I had in my notes, seven, eight, nine, and 10 all seem to need some kind of preamble to them or clarification as to what they mean or how they're applied. All the ones up to six kind of address that within, within the sentence or the paragraph, if you want to call it that. Seven, eight, nine, and 10 all just sort of fly on their own without-
Right.
Yes, I guess those should all-
So there's some language that you kind of either left out or needs to be thrown in there to see what they're, how they're applied.
Yeah, I think maybe restricted sites and then have E, B, and C. So those would all be, you know, sites to be restricted.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at these. Aren't some of these the ones that came from, yeah?
I think so.
And on that same page where seven was?
Yeah.
Since you're talking about visual impact, and I think that's one of your primary concerns, E2, the applicant may incorporate methods to reduce, I think you should need the word may to be changed to shell.
Shell, you're right. Jim, on what page you want?
It's a page, it starts with a D at the top.
E2.
And then E2 is right near the middle, and the third word in is may, which I suggest is be shell.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, definitely.
Sam?
I've observed some solar facilities around and I don't know whether the board has, has ever thought about the connection point. You know, the connection point issue on South Street that you all know about.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have him table that. This isn't a place to discuss that.
Is he talking about the one across from Stetson Home? That's the one the board has already taken some steps and they're going to address it with the-
The one at Stetson where they bulldoze the walls?
Yeah, those two breaks in the stone wall.
What I'm trying to say, Mr. Chairman, is that, I've been at a lot of meetings and the board has never, because of, the board has, because of inexperience, this is a new type of technology, because of inexperience, hasn't realized that there are different methods of connection and relied, relied only on the engineering of the companies who put these facilities- who put these facilities in. And it has been found that a desirable way of connection is through something called a pad-mounted recloser versus just indiscriminate poles that could be, that could be logical in an, in an area that's, that might be a gravel pit or something or whatever the sort is, regard, rather than in an area where it might be more aesthetic to have less poles and one, one connection point rather than a bunch of connection points, just only for visual concerns, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Dan?
I'm a little concerned about the E, the visual impact, just because it doesn't give any methodology as to how you're going to determine it. It seems very case-by-case basis. I think you should at least have some sort of minimums in there as a suggestion.
Okay, minimum in...
Minimum setbacks.
We do.
That's what we discussed, the 250-foot setback. Did that not make it in?
I didn't see it, but I was just...
Yeah, for the R80 specifically.
Visual impact from roadway.
Yes, I guess we should review and make sure that that does make it in.
Make it in, yeah.
Well, it's not a lot of setback.
Do you see a setback we have in there?
It's on I1.
I1?
Yeah, it's a page that has a page at the top, and the I's down to almost the middle. Mentions 50, it mentions 200, mentions 100, too.
Well, these would be the old ones in regards to commercial industrial, right? So we never revise them, well, I guess...
I think that's for all facilities.
No, but for the R80 though, that's where the revision is coming in, where we're opening up to solar bylaw. And I thought specifically for the R80, we discussed the 250-foot setback from...
I thought we had that.
Yeah, I also did, it must have.
I thought I seen it, eh?
No, no, it was already in the solar discussion and we're trying to see if that would be worth incorporating into the marijuana, but I guess maybe it got... Right, is that an agreement that we've all, do we all think we had the same understanding that there's 250-foot setback that we had previously discussed, or am I missing that?
We discussed it.
Yeah, I remember talking about it, but I don't remember.
But I don't think we came to an agreement on it.
Okay, I thought it at least made it into the draft.
Was that for R80?
R80, yeah.
I remember, I remember it being talked about, I don't remember it being passed through.
I thought I saw it in writing at least.
Are you going to allow arrays on a case-by-case basis in any district, or is it only in commercial industrial?
No, this allows solar in R80, given certain restrictions.
Okay, so they're, it's kind of like a case-by-case basis.
It depends on if the parcel qualifies, really.
Yeah, right.
I mean, there are parcels...
I mean, the mile radius fills quite a few projects, right?
We'll take a, we'll take a harder look at that. But the idea was, there are farmers in town, they have sufficient land, and they've got, you know, enough land and enough buffer that they can have fairly good...
The gravel pit on this, too, they have...
I didn't remember you were...
That is, you know, is very visually perfect, okay? And that's been dealing four years now, and like the people up front said, it's not as lucrative as it used to be for the landowner, and it's changing every, every day. And I think that you're making more restrictions and scaring people away. If you limit it to 12, people are going to say, I mean, if that's what the board wants, you're going to get no, no movement. Nobody's not going to come in.
Yeah, we're not making more restrictions, we're loosening up restrictions for what it is now.
But if you're saying 12, if you're limiting it to 12...
12 what?
12 arrays, 12 solar facilities.
In total. In the town.
I mean, that's going to eliminate a lot of potential good parcels, and the market again is going to determine that. But I think you guys have already predetermined that by limiting that amount. But if you're going to review it, I mean, that's fine, right?
We haven't predetermined anything. This was, this is what we've been working on for quite a bit, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Cooper?
I'm getting back to limiting it to 12. Like, Mr. Preble's been waiting four years, I've been waiting three years, so if there's five that gets filled up real fast, we could be waiting for another four years before you change the bylaw, I mean.
There's at least three in this room, if not four.
Yeah, I've been contacted by another individual, that's not in the room. Actually, two, I have two more individuals.
So there's five, there's their five.
How soon would we revisit them?
I need to understand, so you're being contacted by solar companies?
No, no, residents of the town of Berry that heard that the town is opening up the solar bylaw, and they were wondering what direction the town is going in, and they told me that the parcel that they have picked for the project, and they were wondering whether or not they should have input. And all the places that, you know, the people have discussed to me, I say that your parcel would more than likely be applicable for the revision that we're proposing. But, I mean, I've got two separate people and you got three in the room, so that's why my concern is that, and I mean, these are all, I mean, certainly, you know, prime locations for solar out of visual, out of the visual, the buffer that people are concerned about, and five additional permits really isn't, it's not that many. So I think that... What's that?
We have our five.
Right.
Everyone interested in one is here or talked to you.
Right.
We go from there, see how that works out. This is just for now, this is not for ever. You're missing the point. Part of this one-mile radius of no solar encompasses their property.
No, this has nothing to do with the one-mile thing. These parcels that I've been, you know, the people that have been contacted by are far, far exceed that one-mile radius. But I mean, I do think that that should be reviewed, but I'm just saying that if we're going to open it up, we're already going to be at max capacity without unforeseen applicants coming forward. So if we have applicants that have appropriate parcels, why are we going to tell them that they need to wait for the next town meeting to change the bylaw again and put additional permits on it? So I think that we need to consider, you know, maybe upping the number or looking at some other alternatives to restrict the numbers to un...
Right. How would the permits or the special permits be given out? First come, first served type?
First come, first served.
And that's it, close the door on.
That's right. Attorney Beard?
Mark.
Attorney Fines?
I think that's correct.
I, he said it's correct.
Yeah, there's no other, we couldn't do it any other way.
As far as changing the number, you have at least one annual meeting a year. I don't know if there's been any year that you haven't had also a special, so almost every six months you'd have an opportunity, if you saw the number wasn't sufficient and there was reasons to increase it, it's not that, it's not that difficult to increase the number. But once you've addressed all the other things that you want to do in this amendment, the amendment from 12 to 16 or whatever number flies into your heads is a relatively simple boom, 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 hearing, vote, boom. Of course, the attorney general has to approve it, but that's...
But I think if we can go with the number so that we can have, you know, I guess some control so it doesn't get out of hand, I think that we at least need to review the number and maybe think to add a few fields, just so we don't already have additional, you know, undue competition for those parcels that are going to be allowed.
Here's something, what about existing solar farms if they wanted to expand? Have we ever even addressed that?
They'd still be one facility, if they keep it.
It'd be under the same license, I think.
Yeah, but say there's one in place and they wanted to make it bigger.
They'd have to come back to you to get permission to expand.
Would that...
But they wouldn't be a new, it wouldn't be an additional facility unless they went and made it a separate parcel.
Would that count as one of those five remaining if it was only the 12?
My, off the top of my head, without thinking, you know, for three weeks about it, would be yes. It would be an expanded one of the existing seven.
It would be a modification to the special.
It wouldn't increase the number, unless they did something weird.
It would be under that same, the umbrella of that same permit then, yeah. Okay.
So did we want to address the number or do we want to, what do you want to do with that?
I think that's for discussion after the public hearing, please.
Right, yeah, if you were mainly just trying to get input from the crowd.
Yeah, I think we can revisit that and see what the...
See if the number needs increasing.
Should we bring it up?
Yeah.
Say, you'd have to wait until you have a town meeting, change its bylaw before you can put in an application.
We wouldn't be able to do anything with an application now.
But you have to wait until it's approved.
Yes.
Either a special election or a special gathering or...
And remember, there's no guarantee this is going to be approved at a town meeting.
Now, the town folks might shoot it down.
You know, we, 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 the plan is, we will get this to the shape we think it makes sense, and then the plan is we will vote to make a favorable recommendation at the town meeting. But, you know, it's a zoning bylaw and it requires a two-thirds majority.
I don't like it, we've had to work.
I think some of the questions are, are any of these potential additional solar sites able to do anything at this point in time? If they wanted to risk the money and the time and have some actual facility that is going to put, you know, the thing up, go to the expense of preparing the plan and everything like that, they could come before your board complying with everything that's in this proposed vote and then have to wait until the vote of the town, the review by the attorney general, approval by the attorney general, before your board could actually issue them a permit.
Would somebody be willing to jeopardize that?
They'd have to, they'd have to a substantial amount before they get to that.
I don't think, I don't think anybody that hasn't gotten one already in the process would, just speaking as a layman, but as a developer, I don't think anybody would put the money up on gambling.
No. I only suggested it for those gamblers that are in the...
Chris?
It's not gambling. Doesn't work. There's one permit.
Now we're over.
Sam, there's one you've got. Does at least the back one more come? Celtics are still on.
Anything else?
One more, I would just...
Your five minutes are up, Peter.
If the board would consider raising the number a little bit, okay?
That's, that's definitely under consideration.
The board will certainly consider that.
Meeting, I'd like to thank you guys for working with us and reestablishing this bylaw so we can at least keep our way in.
Yeah, well, thank you for saying that, we appreciate it.
Definitely.
Thanks.
So you say the Celtics and everybody's going to rush out the...
No, everyone's going to GP.
Who's got money on the game? I want to thank all of you for coming, and I appreciate your input. It's a difficult process, we're trying to do this thing, but we also realize that there are...
You may want to close the public hearings that you've already done, because I don't think you've formally done that yet. And then you've got two more to go.
Two more?
No, that's two.
That's it.
We're done.
Oh, those are tonight?
Boy, you're pushing.
Well, hey, you guys are...
Most of them are... All opposed.
Keep my hand out of that one.